I have five twenty nine. And I want to welcome everybody to the city council meeting here. Once again, we'll move expeditiously, but we'll be thorough in our move, in our motions and resolutions for tonight. Also, at the end of every meeting, item number fifteen on tonight's agenda is comments from the public on anything that was on the agenda tonight. So keep that in mind as you report is required by law. Okay, we're now at five thirty. And what I call it, board meets order, you're now in session with the city council, mayor board of all for January twenty four, January fourteen, twenty twenty five. Okay, first, we have the invocation and the prayers, may we bow. Did having a father would come before you again, asking you for your blessings and thank you for the ones that been given. We thank you for this day, for the present mind, body and soul of all the people that live in Brownsville, Tennessee. And we continue to honor you and keep you even during this season. We, as we move from winter into spring, may we transition in a good way, solidly thinking, motivated by the concerns, the people that we serve. May you continue to bless each man, woman, child in the city of Brownsville and Haywood County throughout this country. And we keep those in mind who have lost their houses and lives in California. As we think about those who fight wars in Gaza and Ukraine, we continue to ask your blessings upon this community. We will always give you the honor and the glory of which it all belongs, in Jesus' name, amen. Please stand for the prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, I will say that we have to count our blessings, count our blessings in this community, just to be able to see here another day. And still feel with great opportunity and optimism and give an honor to God and the glory where it belongs. Thank you for our junior alderman tonight, for me hanging in there with us. Thank you again for the support and we, we have always loved to see you. Do we have any visitors here from the Haywood Leadership Class? Please stand and tell us who you are.
I'm Angela Taylor. I work at the USDA office and sole and large conservation.
Okay, thank you and welcome aboard.
I'm Natalie Pinner. I work as the court administrator for Judge David Scott here in town.
Thank you. Let's give all our junior aldermen. We won't keep you long tonight. We hope we will drop some information that will allow you to come forward and serve on some of our boards and make, you know, make the city better. We all have obligation to make it better where we are, and this is what we're here to do tonight. First thing on our dinner is approval of minutes from the regular December tenth meeting. You have a minute, board of all, you've got a minute before you. I like to entertain a motion. We approve the minutes as presented for our motion. Moved or here second, then moved and properly second. Are there any questions or corrections or concern? Can none? We'll call for vote. All the papers let it know about sign of eye. Those opposed, no. Okay. This is within the march. I didn't see you back there. How are you doing? All right. We have three. Well, we actually have orders number ten thirty two, the annexation proposal on the first reading. Ten seventy three is a, is a tone for the same said property and ten seventy four, which is the plan of services. Ms. Mulligan did send us an email this morning saying that she do want to delay the vote on this particular annexation if she gets more information to consult with her advisors. So we're going, we're not taking, we're just going to delay the vote on the resolutions concerning the annexation of the Mulligan property. Which brings us down to item number seven. Any comments or questions my attorney banks on?
Let's go ahead and get a motion to delay any action on that ordinance and those two resolutions, just so we can have it for the.
Make a motion to delay.
All right, turn here a second. All right, any questions, concerns? Okay, all the vote delay of resolutions, ten seventy three, ten seventy four, and orders number ten thirty two, letting it know about a sign of eye. Those opposed, no. Orders ten thirty two, to resume ten seventy three and seventy four delay. Okay, brings us to add resolution number ten seventy five. The alley closed. This is a proposal that came forth from Main Street and was vetted through the planning commission. Tom, you want to give us a brief overview, briefly? Thank you.
Sure. I was going to show you a couple of pictures that we got planned and keep my comments straight, but uh. So the whole purpose of closing the alley is to create a, just a public area to where, you know, you can sit down. You can look at the beautiful murals that we're working on and so I think, you know, basically we've hammered out some of the details as far as what who's going to do what. And so so that's our vision, you know, that eventually we'll get this alley fixed up with lights, with seating, with all the murals and so.
All right, what's your timeline on it, Tom? When you're planning to have this all?
All right, well, the murals will be, the three murals that the C mobile grant is, we're working on it, that is provided will be done by July of twenty twenty five. We're trying to, you see, there's a set of angel wings that are not in the P mobile grant that we're trying to get someone to fund now. And then the tables and chairs will have to be a little bit later. So, you know, it's an ongoing project, so the murals and the overhead lights will be phase one that we're working on. And then this angel wings and the tables and chairs will be phase two. So depending on what kind of money we get after this, but I would, I would hope in the next year, if not before.
Hey, Tom, what's your projected cost for the wings?
All right, they're about Chris Moore and actually I'm glad you brought that up. I'm just, I'm just going to keep it a bit long. Blame it on Brad. I've got a copy of those wings. They're about seventy eight hundred dollars through Chris Moore and so they actually. So that's, they actually have the images of the blues, but they're in the other murals. You have to look sort of close. I'm sorry, I didn't bring enough. So that's what the angel wings would look like up close. He's quoted a price of seventy eight hundred dollars and if you notice, there's a company that pitched it to that right there in the center, but they haven't. They haven't agreed to it yet.
What about the, the rest of the cost like, what about the rest of the cost, like for the tables and the chairs? If they're going to be absorbed by donation?
We hope so, you know, that will be something that may have to roll around the next, you know, next fall, but yes, they will have to be, you know, Main Street may be able to fund a couple of the tables. But I'm hoping that either Ford or Bosch will take care of that as well. They indicated that they might. It'll just a matter of getting them to agree to it.
Okay, so you already have funding in place for the lights and the mirrors, I know what else, just not the angel wings and the tables and chairs.
That's right, correct.
So the questions I've been getting, of course, is like, what would be the use of this? What would be the vision for the use of this space? What do you, what do you think? What do you see happening here?
Well, I see people coming, you know, like if they go in to get their coffee from the meeting grounds, you know, this good weather, go sit there, Melanos, you know, they don't have a lot of inside seating. They do have a few seats out front. And I see people coming across, you know, eating there, but I also see people just looking at the murals, you know, and maybe just taking the load off, you know, for a few minutes. So I just sort of envision a community gathering place.
And those, those are questions that I got. Just, I mean, because everything you presented looks well and good, but there was a vital seat in the courthouse and at the town park and potentially at the amphitheater, but we don't see a lot of people there. This is definitely a tourist type attraction. I just don't see a lot of local people using, but you know, I just, I just got some questions and I just tried to answer them the way you just did, that they will be used for a community scene. Do y'all have any questions or Tom, you have any?
Yes, yeah, a question. Um, Tom, so fire and police, any emergency services, are they, are they good with shutting the alley way down?
Oh, yes. Now, the police said they didn't have any trouble. Fire department said they couldn't get any equipment down that alley anyway. And the only stipulation I have is from Bud and they said got to have access. So everything that we put in there will be, like the tables will be, you know, freestanding. You'll be able to move those to the side. They need to get in there. So that was the only concern. They have to have, they have an underground cable or something, electric line or something that they have to see about, so.
So who would be responsible for the upkeep on it, the garbage and trash?
We, we have agreed to do that. I, I sent the mayor a letter and I think that's included in the resolution. That Main Street will be responsible for the garbage or the maintenance, you know. We're going to, we bought the lights. Bud has agreed to install the lights. They also have agreed to, we're going to install a electric meter, monitor, the usage, shouldn't be a lot of usage, but anyway. We're going to buy the, you know, whatever parts it takes to install the meter, then they, they'll install it. Install it, they'll use the, their labor. So basically, we're going to be responsible for your trash, the pickup and making sure it stays clean.
All right, um, okay, that's one address, one issue to be addressed. And then, but the next one, I guess, for me is when are you planning on closing off the actual alley? You going to wait till you get the tables and chairs? When you come back before us and let us know so the police and fire and everybody knows? Because it's amazing, you know, it might not, you know, you're trying to make it happen and we appreciate the effort, but I'll, you know, I'll have to think about it after the fact, you know, the sustainability of it all, the safety of the public and and while moving forward in the states, it looks, the rendering looks great. It looks really good. I think that'd be awesome. But those are the questions I got.
We could do one or two things, you know, we could either wait until we get the tables and chairs or we could get the, we talked about doing some rolling planters where you put those and close it all on either end. And then just let it be bare until we get, you know, the seating, yeah.
What, what, what do you?
Just a comment, and, and I wholeheartedly support the alley closure. Uh, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of different, you know, but it's definitely in keeping with our theme with our tourism theme of, of music and Tina Turner and Henry Nixon and, and the blues and, and in Brownsville and that. And I would say that, you know, you'd be surprised what we draw people. Me being a product of having stayed in Nashville quite a bit and seeing those wings in Nashville is totally amazing. I mean, the gulch area was virtually, nobody coming to the gulch. The wings set the gulch in Nashville, that area of Nashville on the map. I mean, there were people all over taking pictures and posting those wings there. So, you know, I, I don't think we ought to underestimate, you know, the value of, of, of that social media and what people, people put on there because I don't think we got to sell our product as much as we got to get a few people down there first and, and get the ball rolling. And I think it's a lot of bang for the buck.
Thank you. I agree. I agree because, you know, Jackman Ubanks is the one that approached me, said, I'd love to see some angel wings. And I said, well, fine. And so that was a good idea.
So, so the businesses in that area in, in Nashville have really thrived. And when I tell you about those wings, I mean, when I tell you about the lines for those wings, you walk by seven o'clock in the morning. They're, they're lined from here to the courthouse. And, and later in the day, they get even farther than that. So they, it's definitely a tourist attraction. And I think it's worth a shot.
Okay, so back to my, my, back to my statement, when we, we pass this resolution tonight, do, when will we actually close the alley? Are we looking at phase two? That, that's going to be the question for the police and fire. We want to just, we want to whip in there one day. Do you have the planners already in place to block it?
I do not.
Do you have to have him purchase them yet?
I have not.
Will you come back before us? We, we can go ahead and, and pass it, attorney banks, if you think this is appropriate. And then at phase two, come, come back before us and let us know that it's actually, you got everything in place. So we're allowing you to move forward. It's, it's a fifth month in front of all of them. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve resolution number ten seventy five. Start your motion.
Go ahead.
Motion, start here a second. The mood and profit secondary, questions, concern?
And then one more, one more concern.
Yes, sir.
I know that, you know, we are a growing city and the homeless people, there's no code or goal that a homeless person can kind of like slip in and sleep in that alley.
I hadn't really thought about that, but I mean, they'd have to be sleeping on top of the table. I guess it's possible.
So police department can kind of handle that, kind of so.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's something I had thought about with being mentioned.
But probably no more than, than it is now. Yeah, but, and, and I, I mentioned, I worry about that town, you know, worry about the amphitheater over there too. It's the same thing. I'm glad that they had moved in over there.
Well, there was a sleeping bag behind town fourth wall for a while where somebody was hanging out there.
Well, my question, have you, I, I noticed in the resolution, you have, you have contacted the business owners and everybody's in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. You have motion on the floor, the first and the second. This time I'd like to call for the vote. All the papers let it know about a sign of eye. Those opposed, no. Okay, resolution ten seventy five passed. Just let us know when you plan to block it.
Thank you.
Uh, resolution number ten seventy six, fines on city owned property. Attorney banks, you want to get a claims report?
Yeah, I've contacted by city hall about regulating carrying firearms on city property. And, you know, I, I knew there had been recent changes in the, in the handgun carry law. So contacted M T A to see, you know, what our parameters were as far as being able to, to limit somebody's ability to, to carry weapons on city property. And so essentially I've worked with them to, to come up with, with this, which it, it allows the storage of firearms and ammunition and motor vehicles by permit holders. But there are obviously some exceptions, such as law enforcement officers, they're allowed to carry them, you know, twenty four, seven on basically any and all properties. And then court personnel in carrying out their, their duties as well. So, you know, this, this would put in, in place of a policy to hopefully protect the, the workplace without infringing on anybody's constitutional rights.
Okay, um, any questions or powerful Muslims?
It's all city property. City parks.
Yeah, public work, city hall, you know, whatever, whatever's owned by the city of Brownsville, this would apply to.
So this, this is a policy in place for the employees of the city Brownsville, is that correct?
Well, it, it is. I mean, it would, it would apply to, to them as well, but it would cover any city owned properties.
Okay. All right, um, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve resolution number ten seventy six. Do I hear motion? Motion, do I hear a second?
Say.
All right, all right, that's open up for discussion and concerns. Are there questions, concerns from the alderman or attorney banks?
Oh, since this firearm is coming up, have you been an incident or something, you know? Have we had a previous incident where we had public workers carrying firearms or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of.
So we just kind of making sure we put it in place so it won't happen.
So we have a policy.
Because of changes in, in the state law. So there was like, we just want to be clear.
Okay.
I mean, I know it is a dual purpose for this resolution, that's to put a policy in place for our employee, but also protects all city owned property while not infringing upon the right to care. So it's putting a policy in play. I, I, I don't think it answers all the questions, but we, it's, it's better what we have.
So, so let me just run a scenario really quick. Guy's walking in the city park, he's got his, there's a permit. And he's just walking down the trail over there. Somebody sees him, says, guy's got a firearm on city property, let's call them out one one.
Now, now, civilians, I, I didn't answer your question very well a minute ago. It applies to all city property, but only to city employees.
City employees, okay.
Yeah, so I mean, if, if they, if, if a city employee goes to Webb Banks Park, the empty garbage cans or whatever, you know, then, then this applies to them, but civilians, I mean, you know, non-employees, it's, it's the state laws of Tennessee. Sorry.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So, so, yeah.
All right, any other questions, concerns?
You know, just, let's just run this rabbit down, down the hole here. So you got a city employee that's, is picking up of garbage, working. He can't take it in the city shop.
Right.
So therefore, we're probably not going to take it on his route with him or what? Does he go back? Does he put it in his car? Does he?
He'd have to keep it in his car.
And he can't, he can't take it in the city truck.
No.
Right, okay.
Not, not unless he's law enforcement.
Yeah, okay, I, I just, you know. All right.
Okay, any other questions, concern? Okay, we have a first, a motion and a second. At this time, I call for the vote. All the papers let it know about a sign of eye. Those opposed, no. Okay, ten seventy six passed. All right, next we have a presentation, Mr. John Ashworth. I don't think we have a handout in front of me concerning.
Good afternoon. The mayor and the alderman and members of the, well, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to, to do this presentation. About a project that I think will be in the best interest of Brownsville by the National Park Service. As I said, I think will be of tremendous value if we're successful. I put a press release that we're going to release to the press tomorrow on each one of your desks and I think on the city staff's desk as well. I am a board member of the lynching sites project of Memphis and have served in numerous capacities with this organization, including four years as the president. Our full mission was the discovery, location and memorialization of lynching victims in Shelby County, Tennessee. I was recruited by this organization as, as a result of the work that I did here in Haywood County as the chairperson of the Elwood Williams Memorial Committee in two thousand and fifteen. We know about twenty lynching sites in Shelby County involving thirty five victims. In May of two thousand and seventeen, on the one hundredth year anniversary of the lynching of their persons, we were joined by students from Central High School and we placed two mark, and two markers were erected to memorialize Mr. Person. One, one by us and one by the students from Central High School. In two thousand and twenty one, with the assistance of Representative Steve Cohen, we submitted a request of US National Park Service to have the site of Mr. Person lynching designated as a National Park Service site. This site is still, is still under, underdeveloped and as much the same as it was in nineteen seventeen at the time of his lynching. On May thirty first of two thousand and twenty two, the one hundred seventeenth Congress of the United States passed H R seventy nine, play up titled Evaluating Lynching Locations for National Park Sites Act. Directed this, this act directed the Secretary of the Interior to do a suitability and feasibility study of a network of eight locations associated with lynchings in the vicinity of Memphis, Tennessee. Of the eight sites, seven are in, seven are in Shelby County and the eighth is Elwood Williams here in Brownsville, Tennessee. In February of two thousand and four of this year, we met with the Department of Interior Assistant Secretary for Fish and Wildlife and Parks in Shannon Estenoy. In Memphis and this past October, here in Brownsville, we hosted an N P S party of five research people studying here in Haywood County. We hosted them visiting sites here in Haywood County that were of historical significance or connected to the lynching of Elwood Williams in nineteen forty. My purpose for appearing before you tonight is to announce the next step in this process, which is the return of the National Park Service Study Group and to hold public meetings to share information and material and receive public comments about this project. That meeting is scheduled for February the fifth, one P M in the cafeteria of the Carver School Building. As a matter of information, a similar meeting for the public for the seven sites in Memphis will be, take place the next day, February, February sixth at Rose College in Memphis. The subject may not be easy to talk about, but it is important and important to Haywood County. In addition to the educational benefits, there are multiple benefits that come with having a site designated as an N P S site. Not the least of which is economic growth related to tourism and additional access to grants and funding. There is also a very significant interest by the academic community in newly designated N P S sites. This will be especially true as these would be the first federally recognized historical sites associated with the legacy of lynching. Should you have any questions, please let me know. And as a sign, Frank Stevenson, Special Projects Administrator for the Tennessee Department of Tourism, will be joining us on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ashworth, you also, you're working on a book signing with DAW, could you give us a update?
Yes. I brought my notes completely on because I thought you might ask that. And I'm just going to read to you what I'm, I'm working on the press release on this. So let me just read, read that if I may. Press release honoring the remarkable life of a man by the name of Nicholas Saye. During February's Black History Month, the Dunbar Carver Museum is hosting a presentation on a book signing by Dean Calbreath, author of a book titled The Sergeant. It is a book about the extraordinary life of Nicholas Saye, a man whose journey took him across continents and through significant historical events. He was born Mohammed Ali Ben Saye around eighteen thirty six in the Brunei Empire, modern day northeast of Nigeria. Nicholas, Nicholas Saye's life is a testament to resilience, adaptability and the transformative power of education. Nicholas Saye's story begins in Africa where he was captured and sold into slavery, but not the transatlantic slavery. His intelligence and linguistic prowess helped him navigate and survive the trans Saharan slave trade. From the Middle East where he converted to Islam and learned Arabic to Europe, where he mastered multiple languages and served Russian nobility. Saye's incredible journey led him to the United States, a country that he, a country he chose to come to voluntarily. He enlisted in the Union Army during the Civil War and served as a sergeant in the Fifth and Fifth Massachusetts Volunteer Infantry Regiment. His linguistic skills and worldly knowledge made him an invaluable asset to his regiment. After the war, he contained his commitment to education, working as a teacher and a community leader in various locations, including Detroit, Charleston, Arkansas, and here in Brownsville, Tennessee. In Brownsville, Tennessee, Saye's dedication to education continued until his death in eighteen eighty two. His memoirs were written in Brownsville and provide a detailed account of his remarkable life and served as an inspiration to all.
Okay, do you have a date on the book signing?
Uh, I'm sorry, February twenty, yes, February twenty seventh at the Dunbar Carver Museum. We have not set the time just yet. But it will be on February twenty seventh. I've been in communication with Dean Calbreath and, and he, he'll be here on that day.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ashworth.
Okay.
All right, next we have our community development report, Ms. Krista May.
Any questions regarding those to meet with development, your point? Uh, before you, we have an action plan from Safe Street for All Grant, and we have Mr. Tony Tia here to highlight some points in this action plan.
You can come out of form, Mr. Peter.
Everyone, I was thinking about that the whole time. I just wanted to see if you have any questions, if you had opportunity to do the action plans. Just kind of go over the, the purpose of it. If you adopt the plan of the revolution, to a commitment of what's called Vision Zero, that's zero fatalities, zero serious injuries on your, your streets or within your, your city. If you go through the document, you'll see it's broken in the past five years of where the data has been pulled. There's been a twenty ser, uh, serious injuries and poor fatalities on your roads, whether it be pedestrian or vehicle related. Believe it just in your city altogether, including statement thing routes. There's been nine, there's nine hundred and forty seven accidents, five hundred and thirteen are. There's been nine, there's nine hundred and forty-seven accidents, five hundred and thirteen are actually on county, or city, in there. So the property damage is the leading issue. As we come around here, uh, look at the accidents, a lot of them are not, uh, non-collision related, so. That can go in, you know, that meaning it's running into utility pole pitch or whatever. Uh, but again, it's adopting to aim for that Vision Zero. What this document does is opens you up for total grant funding. Is it for demonstration grants? One thing to note. That we did do some speed studies on some of these roads. We, there's some serious speed. Thompson, Thomas.
Tom Street.
Um, eighty-five percent of the, the vehicles are doing like thirty-five. But even like on Haywood, a vehicle is clocked at seventy. So that's something that the demonstration grant, that's something that you can get funding, and when I say funding, it's eighty-twenty. So we decide that, hey, you know, we need to do something traffic calling wise on, on these roads or there's being to get people to slow down. We can put you in for an application with a plan, and whatever the cost is, you are pay twenty percent of it. So it's, there's a lot of other opportunities you can use it for, but that's just an example of something that. Uh, statistics that stood out and what we looked at is like Steve was severe. Um, but I've seen other uses where, um, and I can send you this there and. Other members of demonstration grants and, and supplemental opportunities and where it was used for, I saw asphalt part, uh, asphalt art get covered in. Haven't figured out what that is yet, but someone got paid to paint some asphalt. So, there's, you can do that, you can enhance your crosswalks, which I'm sure could be used in the circle. Or pedestrian safety, get the enhanced signage with the lights. Do some more striking to help with your, uh, kind of city square, your roundabout. To keep traffic going in correct direction, because I know there's been discussion on vehicles just going straight through. So this again is just, whatever we can brainstorm, whatever we can put into an application, now that you have this, and when you adopt as a resolution. It puts you available to get all those funds as resource.
Um, it, would, would that affect, uh, uh, supplying for more safety grades, uh, because most of our roads are state routes? Would that affect the application process or what we can do?
No, so you can actually use it as a multi-jurisdictional. If you do a multi-jurisdictional. And so say you want to do something on these things, and T dot's like, okay, I approve you to do it. Um, because you're doing a multi-jurisdictional. Uh, application, it actually makes you stand out more. Than if city Brownsville were just to go by themselves. Because it's, implementation grants are very, very competitive, so if you get multi-jurisdictional, it puts you in class above. If you did do something on T dot, you can get with T dot, they could help fund, so you're on that twenty percent. You can say, hey, you match this twenty percent, they cover ten percent, they could cover the ten, it just can't be out of federal funds.
Uh, how long is it, is action plan good?
Action plan, it's, it's, and it's good until you adopt something different. The vision is by twenty forty-five is really what the vision is, to get the numbers down.
What about speed tables? You think they're effective? Maybe to.
They're more speed bumps.
Yeah, I think they are. The, the speed cushions, just a nice rolling home.
So we call them.
Yeah, we call them a lot of things.
Yes, it depends on the type of vehicle you drive. I drive a truck, I just consider it not much. But, you know, it's, it is very effective, and those usually work at that twenty-five to thirty mile per hour speed, which is the speed on most of your roads. So it would be really effective, because I have hit them over thirty, and I, I found out they work. They got my attention, just an element. Uh, something else that does work are, uh, mobile. Automated mobile speed enforcement systems. Now, th- this doesn't mean people are going to get tickets in the mail. But this will capture the license plate, run it through the police department's database, what their address is. And send them, and it gives them kind of a warning like, hey. You were caught, you were, you were, you were documented this speed on this road. Should you be pulled up by a police officer, this is what you're fined would have been. This is what it would cost you, and if you kind of gives them a little wake up. A lot of people don't understand the cost of speeding until they see it kind of ran out like, okay, I was doing five over, that really cost me two hundred and fifty bucks. And I do it five days a week, okay? You know, it, so that's something that could be used also, but again, in Tennessee, you can't issue a ticket based on the automated system.
Natalie, would you agree with that? Most people don't know what speed you call.
I saw you smiling.
So it is a little bit of a, like a soft wake up, soft warning to maybe get some people to understand. Uh, but yes, so those are just a few to help with the, kind of the speed. Also, speed signs. Uh, the need signs that you see that, uh, run off of solar, letting people know what their speed is. Making them aware of those also, I think they've seen a fifty-nine percent reduction with those automated systems in speed. So that's significant.
We got this plan through a grant, and the idea of the grant was a new, it was new to the area, new to. Uh, federal side highway safety, but we knew we couldn't get applied for more grants till we got the planning grant. So we went through the routine. Now it's important that we get a list of what we can and can't do and see what speaks. Just because there's a grant event, that means you should go and get it, but, uh, I, I think there's some safety issues that you've identified in this plan that we can. We could, uh, move forward on, but we gotta, we gotta make sure we move, got a lot going on. Um, at this time, I'd like to entertain motion, we adopted safety for all action plan. Motion, or his second. And the move to profit second, any questions concerned? You know, we're calling for vote off in paper, letting know about a sign of eye. Those are Paul's name. All right, next we have our financial management report from Ms. Sherri Bass.
I have any questions of Mr. Charlie, Mr. Charlie, the finance report. Thank you.
I'm there now, and, and then, any questions concerned? Um, at this time, I'd like to entertain motion, we accept the financial report as presented, or here motion.
Yeah, right.
So who, or here second. And the move to profit that, and also paper letting know about a sign of eye. Those are Paul's name. Next, we have, uh, the mayor. Um, I can, I want to say thank you again to the community for just doing such a tremendous job during the holiday season. Doing the spirit of giving, it seemed like it was a long time ago, but it was just recently, so. The city of Brownsville adopted, uh, Angel Tree for the head star, and you can see all those out there with the kids. Uh, really, 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 really good morning, going out there and actually revisiting what the real spirit of Christmas is and that's, uh, giving. So we're very good for the kids, and we hopefully we very good again next year, that was super exciting. Um, we, you know, in South Bank, so a hundred years old. Um, one of the, well, the oldest bank in the state of Tennessee. Uh, and we, it just kind of, we didn't want to be remiss and just let that pass by, so we see our community leaders out there with the policemen inside them. Um, and we're able to recognize on a place level, that, that's not, that's, that's a lot to be said. When you have an issue. Uh, with your debit card or with a, with your bank account, you can walk down the street or call somebody and actually talk to somebody, that, that still goes a long way. Uh, in our community, so we'll thank you then south and all for a hundred years of service. Uh, Vision Haywood, the, once again, the community stepped up, served over five hundred fam, uh, individuals. All volunteer base, to see this machine work is incredible. We'll help here Walmart, uh, buying and packing toys. Uh, for the kids to do, uh, be a part of Christmas basket giveaway, this is grassroots program. For this community, by this community, that's strictly with volunteers, raising over thirty thousand dollars in one day. And then going out and delivering those baskets one day. It's, it's, that's incredible, you just don't see that every day, and something we should be very, very proud of. Hopefully be able to tell that story, uh, as with more pictures and videos as we move forward. Thank you to the volunteers. The Boys and Girls Club, you see me there making an annual presentation to the Boys and Girls Club. Um, for their allocation with this, within our budget, it's been the same for the last ten years, we assist them with their utility deal, so. We're, we're super, I was very proud, and we're very happy to see, to receive that donation, uh, that we allocated in our budget every year. Uh, we continue investing equipment, we, you know, this is a side tractor, side cutter, it was. We use to cut the state routes, and the oven was completely outdated, ordered it months ago, six months ago, forgot we ordered it. And I pulled it up, and they was like, what is this? Uh, this is the tractor we ordered, and we'll continue to make a tremendous amount of investment in our people and equipment, whether it be the police department, fire department. Or Public Works, we are in the process of redoing the bathrooms of Public Works, have been touched in thirty to forty years. We, uh, we did a day room for the fire department, so that our firefighters have more of, uh, comfortable space, have been touched in thirty years. Um, and we'll continue to make this, we put a new roof on the, uh, building bounce to the street before we left and moved the police department there. Continue to invest in our, in our, in our people. Um, Public Works did an excellent job with the snow, uh, that was just a couple pitches where we catch, once again, that's new equipment up at the top left corner. Uh, we put a new blade on two of the skid steers, uh, and did an excellent job of moving the snow, so, and then of course. In that left bottom pitch, you can't see everybody, there was some shovels at work as well, so. Thank you to Public Works, Jerry Clinton, Drake, and, and everybody there that did an excellent job. I'm hoping that, uh, there was some good Facebook policy. Um, at this time, I'd like to yield, um, Ms. Amy Marsh is here with us. And if you just kind of give, thank you so much for taking the time, if you come up for it, just kind of give us a little update about. Where we are, what's going on, people ask me all the time, I try to tell them, that's the camera, I want you to hear.
It's a lot.
Yes, it's a whole lot.
Uh, good evening, thank you for, um, giving me just a few minutes. Um, couple things that we're excited about and that, um, to update you on. The first is, um, our improved academic achievement and growth. Uh, we did get report card grades. I believe it was right before Christmas. Um, and three of our four schools went up an entire letter grade. Um, and when that happens, that means you had a whole lot of growth, which means your achievement increased, and so we're really proud of that work. We're really proud of our teachers, our students, um, for the work that they did to do that, and we look forward to that continually. Um, and that was kind of the goal from day one, so we're excited about that. Um, as we kind of continue down this path of a new high school, there's a lot going on with that. There's actually a public meeting on Thursday evening about that, um, at the Justice Complex at six P M. Um, so we are encouraging anyone who would like to speak on behalf of the need for a high school. To, we would love for you to come to that event. Um, also you can get some more information about that, quite a bit of it has been in the local papers lately, just trying to keep people updated on that. And what the plan for that looks like. It's much more than just a new school. It's a domino effect, which allows all our schools, one to convince sound schools. Um, to have a more effective grade band structure than changing schools every two years. Right now, our kids have five changes. Um, that's a lot. Every transition, you lose ground academically, that's just typically proven, so. That's one of the reasons we want to do this, because it's a domino effect that allows you to convince those grade loving Sam. When you do that, you're using less buildings. Um, you can put that money back into salaries and capital improvements for other buildings, so there's a lot of benefits from that. Um, one of those rumors I hear out there is that, oh, that means they're gonna lose jobs. Now, we're not talking about less children, we're just talking about grouping them differently. So it doesn't mean that teachers are going away. Um, what it means is that we're gonna group them more effectively, so that when they are working with students, they're working on bright band specific skills. Um, so that's kind of the quick version of it. Um, but certainly if there are any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
Ms. Amy Marsh, thank you for being here, we appreciate the update. I was looking in the paper today, you know. We've noticed over the last few years, the governor's number one priority is school vouchers.
Yes, sir.
What kind of impact do you think that'll have on populations in public schools in rural areas?
I think it'll have an extremely detrimental impact, particularly on rural areas. Um, what you hear in the messaging is that it's a matter of choice. People already have choice. Um, you can go to other counties if you want to, you can go to private schools if you want to. What it does is divert. Public school monies to private educational facilities. So people who are attending those facilities will now receive dollars. The dollars that our district would normally receive as a public school district. The problem with that is, it's not a dollar for dollar loss. With that, when that child's funding goes away, which is about seventy thousand two hundred dollars per child. It isn't just that child's funding that goes away. When you're paying for things, you're paying for buses, you're paying for classrooms, you're paying for books. And every loss is a loss in dollars, so it has an overall detrimental effect on the district, not just the loss of one child. And it's really, the bottom line is it's, it's funding private education with public education dollars, which. I have no problem with saying, I'm adamantly opposed to.
Yeah, well, I, and I was just, you know, it looks like there's possibilities for the facts.
It does.
And I was just thinking about the programming for the new school, and, you know, obviously we have projected growth, uh. And then I guess we'd have to step back a little bit and say, well, we, you know.
I don't really see that as being an issue, because most schools aren't seven thousand two hundred dollars for the year. Um, so, while you may get those funds, you would still have to supplement those funds. So it isn't that you now can go to a private school for free, you get X amount of dollars to go to that private school. But it's gonna take more dollars for that to happen. Um, and also, parents don't have to use those dollars for, this, this is one of my bigger concerns. They don't have to use those dollars for tuition. They can use them for any school-related expense that they see appropriate. It might be my child needs a car to drive to school, so I'm gonna use that money to put to a car. It might be, I want my child to have a computer at home, and, you know, these other things that go with it, and I'm gonna buy that, so. It isn't going from one educational institution to another necessarily. It's left to the parent's discretion about how they want to use that and what they want to do with that, and that, like I said, typically won't cover an entire year of tuition. At most private schools anyway.
Thank you.
And I'll say this, um, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, the funding of the new high school that's been proposed is a. Tax neutral proposal. There are payments in lieu of taxes that are coming from blue old city over the next forty years. Uh, to the tune of about two hundred and fourteen million dollars, if you look at time value money, and also that someone has to borrow money to build a school. It kind of makes it, uh, neutral. Um, that's not all the pilot dollars that'll be used, but that's something that I think all the community sees a investment, they won't put a burden on the taxpayers to do it. You know, that, that depends on who you talk to, but this is an opportunity for economic growth, for the future of our children, and something that hasn't been done in fifty, what, three years?
The newest school is fifty-three years old.
Fifty-three years old. So, uh, our children deserve what everybody else has. Do you have any postcards?
We, um, actually, I don't have any postcards, because I gave them all out today. Um, but I will bring some more and leave them up here, um, and that, what he's referring to is kind of a, our, our. Mantra that we've been talking about, which is all students deserve, our students deserve what other students in other districts already have. And there's kind of a top ten reasons for that, um, but I will add that. We have worked with a consulting firm, the school district has on this project, and. These two individuals in this firm have been instrumental in the building of twenty-five schools. They have never, ever seen this opportunity happen before. To have a school without it burdening the, the county or the, um, tax dollar. So it, it's, it's, it's not just unusual, it's a human horn.
Okay, and I, and the school, or board voted unanimously, um, location of school. The budget committee voted unanimously to go ahead and fund it, the I D B board has said yes, pass the resolution. So there's no pushback, um, from any of the, um, organizations or boards that will be involved, as everybody has voted yes. Unanimously, it's just a matter, this polling meeting was already set to hear from the public, but I, as elected officials, I think we all know what everybody wants. But that's six o'clock, Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday, six o'clock, Thursday. At the Justice Conference, if you want to hear your voices heard, but I'm always invited, I stop talking to people every day in Walmart. You know, uh, in, in, in City Hall or in passing, so I've, I've got a pretty good feel for about what people want, so I'm supportive of, I'm definitely supportive of building a new school. Without being a burden to the taxpayers, and the location, uh, it's gonna be, whatever shakes out best in the negotiation, so.
And we're excited about that, and as you said, we did, um. After negotiation with some landowners, select a new property, for those of you who weren't aware, that was a big piece that I admitted as I was thinking through, um. So now it is the Simmons Property out on Highway seventy-six. If you're going from here to Sunny Hill, it's before you get to Sunny Hill on the same side. Um, and so that will be an excellent location, um, really a showplace. Um, as you come into Brownsville, and, uh, and a place around which the community can galvanize, whether it's sports or. Um, music, drama, choir, all the, the extracurriculars. That will be a gathering place where there will be room and space, which we don't currently have for everybody to participate. And multiple things to be going on at one time. You might have a basketball game going on, and I, I don't have my seasons right, but. But you're gonna have multiple athletic activities going on, you might have a game going on here, a practice going on here. And I don't want to say the wrong sports, because they'll get me for that, um, but the idea is only, right now, really only one thing can happen at a time. There's only parking for one thing at a time. Um, with this, you can have everything going on at the same time. Um, traveling tournaments that come into town, um, baseball, travel ball is a big deal. And that brings in dollars to the community.
Yes.
Um, because those people get gas, they get food while they're here, they want to go to the alley to see the angel wings, right? Um, so those are all opportunities for us to bring, um, people to Brownsville and just show them how amazing a place this is. And right now, we just don't have a space like that.
Right, and, and what it also does, everything around it becomes more developing, uh, we just see it in other communities.
There's actually one right now, kind of in the works.
Yes, and, and so there, there's several, that this just brings, that's the corridor where we see the most projected growth from, in my personal opinion. Uh, so, I, I'm happy with, with the location and with the opportunity.
Very exciting.
Questions? Any other questions?
Okay, keep.
Sir.
We gonna stay the time here?
Oh, we gonna stay the time here.
Thank you, Senator. At this time, we have the Autumn Report, Autumn Peter.
I'll have me a thing.
Autumn and Bishop.
Uh, may I like to take a personal form of privilege and. Welcome, my father-in-law and thirty-six-year retired trustee, Sonny House. I guess it's the first meeting. That he's been to since I've been on the board, but thank you for coming, Mr. House. And, and I want to echo what, what the mayor said, um. Public Works, uh. You know, I. We very rarely ever get any to-do's. Everybody knows when you do something wrong, but I, I think this snow removal, um. You know, it's a little wetter snow, maybe been a little easier. One can make that argument, but, um, they did a great job. Uh, I think now we've finally gotten some equipment. I think we. Helped on the equipment, but, um. I'm, I'm really excited about where we're going. Public Works would been able to open our streets back up and get our businesses. Uh, accessible and our school accessible, so. Thank them. Uh, we had a library board meeting last night and, um. Hired a, um. A part-time, um, bookkeeper to help us. With some financial stuff down at the library. Um, I think we've made some couple of changes. We got some new board members and. There again, I guess I'm just excited tonight, but I am excited about maybe the turn of the transition of. Of some things going on in the library. So, um. For all of you that hadn't been to the library in a while, please go. Uh, we're open for suggestions. To, uh, anything you'd like to see new or any books you'd like, um. We, we'd like to, uh, have your input, uh, at our public library. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Autumn, uh, Vice Mayor Flatt?
Good evening. The TV bill, it could be something with one million, one hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and nine cents. Again, generally as one, the average resident's electric bill decreased approximately. Zero, nine, nine, ninety-six, seventy percent. This is a TV issue of cost adjustment. And Coles and I have scheduled a meeting going on too. Which is some problem we're having, but due to the weather on Friday, we canceled, we will be having, and I also have a neighborhood watch meeting.
What about your, uh, your respect for the play?
Next Friday. January the twenty-fourth and nine-thirty. It's a young birthday. We have all of us, I think we're happy to, we're saying the new year, so we need to come out and be all different prayers that we have. On next Friday, it's for the public, it's no cost, just come and. Listen to the prayers and have a good record and fellowship with each other. This will be our first fellowship for this year. So I'm looking for y'all to fill up that. It's going to be at the National Guard Armor. Out on Morgan Street at nine-thirty. So we'll have good music, good prayers, so come and fellowship with us.
Thank you. Um, Autumn Taylor? No report. Okay, um, probably our lady in the park here is having the reports. I saw Sonia. Their police department chief Sanders. Well, I will say this. Thank you to the police department and to the fire department and our public and Public Works. They're doing a great job, but, um, we had very minimal wrecks and incidents over the course of the, uh, the weather event. So thank you all for doing what you do. Thank God that we stay safe. Um, are there any other reports of the community? You know, are there any public comments? So anything, two minutes, please, anything that was on the agenda tonight. Okay, you know, I'd like to entertain motion with your journey. Someone to her here say. All the papers let it know about a sign of eye. Those who want to stay, you stay, and those who, oh, get them going.